Hello, everyone. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Department School Committee meeting today, Thursday, September 13th, 2018, at 7:38, and ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome again. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, 8/23/2018, special meeting, 9/5/2018, approval of a minute of minutes executive session, 8/23/2018, executive session, 9/5/2018, enrollment report of 9/1/2018, the school police report of 8/1/2018, the residency truancy report of 9/1/2018, and the student handbooks, all schools. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the report out of executive session meeting. There was a meeting tonight, 9/13/2018, upstairs. There were no votes taken. I'm looking for a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session meeting. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Something's looking different to me in the windows. I can't... Okay, the tints, that's what it is. Yes, okay. That's in the shades. Okay, all right, good. Excellent. Next item, sorry about that. Next item on the agenda is the... I see the reflection off my forehead. Superintendent Report. Thank you, Mr. Denon. I am... Oh, okay. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, item one, Susan Kelly, who is a member of the Cumberland Lincoln Rotary Club, was supposed to be here this evening to give you all an update on the Interact Club, which is the high school club that is associated with Rotary. And Susan Kelly has done a great job of mobilizing students in the high school. And there's a pretty active group of students doing some wonderful things in the community. Remember, the Rotary Club's motto is "Service Above Self." And she really has done a nice job of working with our students. She had hoped to be here this evening to let you know what their plans are for the 18, 19 school year, but unfortunately, apparently she's... has some sort of transportation issue. I think she might be having a difficulty on the flight and could not be here. So we'll make sure that she is here, perhaps at the next meeting, to report out on the good work that she is leading in the high school with our students. The next thing that I wanted to talk to you about is transportation. I know that members of the committee wanted to hear of any issues associated with Durham and the bus transportation. So I did get some information from Durham, but I also asked each of the principals to provide me with some information about buses that may be consistently late picking students up in the morning and bringing them to school on time. And the same is true for the afternoon. So I have a little bit of information to share with you. Most of the concern that I have been receiving, and I know that some members of the school committee have been hearing as well, I know that Bus 19, which to Ashton School, has been an issue. There were a couple of complaints about that particular bus. And I think the single biggest concern is it hasn't... well, there were a couple of concerns, but the single biggest concern is that students are not being brought to school on time. So I have had conversations with Durham, specifically Paul Neves, and he assures me that the problem will be resolved on Monday. I have contacted some parents who expressed concern to let them know that the expectation is that students will be picked up at their bus stop on time and that they will be delivered to school in the morning before the school day starts. So hopefully, Bus 19 will be resolved on Monday. And those few parents that I have communicated with, I've asked them to let me know if that timeline is not being met. BF Norton has an issue with Bus 42 in the afternoon. Students are not being picked up, in some cases, up to a half an hour after the close of the school day. So I will be having a conversation... I got that information today from the BF Norton principal. I will be having a conversation with Mr. Neves about that tomorrow. Community seems to be having an issue. I know that some of you have heard about Bus 34. The single... well, there are a couple of issues with Bus 34. Consistently getting to school on time appears to be one of the issues. The other issue is that bus is full. And capacity is 70 students, and it's my understanding that there are 68 students on that bus right now, which, you know, makes it uncomfortable. So the bus company is working to alleviate that overcrowding issue. It appears also that there are some other issues at community, especially in the morning, with the bus company consistently getting students to school on time. I know that Bus 34 has been an issue in the morning as well, but there were some other buses that seemed to be having an issue with consistency. Now, I don't know if it has anything to do with the construction, but regardless of that, as I stated earlier, the bus company has a responsibility to pick students up at their bus stop on time and get them to school before the school day starts. And you can, you know, ask me any questions after I run through the list here. Cumberland Hill, there is a mini bus that is consistently late. Mini buses generally carry students with special needs. So Bus 41 in the morning at Cumberland Hill has been consistently late. Something has to be done to resolve that bus. And in the afternoon, there is a bus that goes to the YMCA, Bus 7, and also Bus 41 are consistently late in picking up students. So something has to be done about that. The principal of Garvin School reports that there are no major issues. There are no major issues at McCourt. Not exactly sure about North Cumberland Middle School. I have not heard anything specifically about that. The bus company did not report anything, but I will be speaking to the principal tomorrow to ask if there are any concerns with the buses at North Cumberland Middle School. And the only issue at the high school is apparently Buses 31 and 33. There may be an issue with them, with that bus consistently getting to school on time for the start of the school day. And the bus company reports that that issue will be resolved at the beginning of next week. So, you know, that is, you know, a summary of the issues that have been reported to me. And I can tell you that the... I have received most of the concerns that I have received via email is the issue with Bus 19 that goes to Ashton, because it is consistently late. In fact, I think it's getting there after the start of the school day, which is, you know, unacceptable. So hopefully, as I said, that issue will be resolved on Monday.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you for the update. I do have a couple of questions. It does seem like we're in worse shape than we started the school year last year with the busing, or is it, are we about the same? I can't...
You know, I mean, I think, I mean, I think that's a fair question. I, you know, Cindy Shabett and I, you know, generally get calls about or emails about transportation. And I think if you were to ask Mrs. Shabett, I believe that there have been fewer concerns this year, but, you know, we're talking about transporting children. So, and getting them to school on time, and picking them up at the bus stop on time. That's an issue. So I don't, I don't know that there are more issues this year as compared to last, but certainly there are issues that have to be addressed.
My concern with the special needs bus, JJM, they're coming from across town. Even if they leave early enough, it's... I don't know what they're doing for mileage, but maybe it's not... it seems like it's not possible that they can even make that commute in that amount of time. Is that... Yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I don't, you know, I don't think to react. You know, I think, I don't want to be disrespectful here, but... That's what they do. And they, they do busing.
Yeah, I got you.
It seems to me that they need to get this resolved, right? I mean, and again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. And I will say that whenever I talk to Mr. Neves, he's very respectful and responsive to me. And all I can tell you is that we're going to continue to keep working on these issues. And I know that some school committee members provide some very specific information that is helpful. So I can say, you know, this is what I'm hearing, you know, we need to get it resolved. So I, I mean, I, I can say that Mr. Neves has told me that they're looking to... and I don't want to be inaccurate here, but, but I'm pretty sure he said that they're looking to add a bus that may help to resolve some of this, some of these issues.
Excellent. Mr. Fiorillo?
I just want to say that Bus 19 last year, getting to Ashton, was a challenge for Durham the entire school year. So I'm hoping that they can actually solve the problem this year in a timely fashion.
I will stress that when I speak to the bus company. Anyone else? Mr. Demodica?
I think it's highly time to start looking at that busing contract and decide whether Durham is the vendor that we want to keep here, because year in, year out, you know, Paul Neves is a nice guy, Ian's a nice woman down here, but we still have the same issues. And if we're putting 68 children on a school bus, it's gonna arrive late. Otherwise, the kids are gonna get on that bus at 6:00 AM to get there on time with so many stops. And they should have known better already if they got 68 children on a bus getting there on time. It's time to start looking at it in a different way, instead of financial look at what the children are losing in educational time in front of a teacher, because that amounts to money as well. It's time to move on, I think.
It is a concern, Mr. Demodica, especially when the kids haven't even been wearing winter jackets and construction, and, you know, it's tight on the bus. Anyone else? Mr. Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know, so it was our last meeting where we talked about this, and we, I asked for a report on when the buses were getting to school in the morning. And my understanding from Mr. Neves through an email is that we'll, we'll have that at the next meeting. We're likely to have it at the next meeting. I think, I think it's easy for them to produce that. I think we've seen that in the past, that it's just a report that they could print out that had the times using their GPS technology. So I, you know, I sort of reiterate that, because I, we're hearing from parents that the kids are getting to school late. It sounds like you've talked to principals, they're getting to school late. I just want to make sure we all understand the scope of the problem. The other thing I'd like to know is sort of how many kids are expected on each bus? You know, they should be able to have an idea. And I think we've seen this in the past, where you can look at a single route, and you can say it's gonna pick up five at this stop, 10 at this stop, whatever. But I think that would be helpful to have as well, so we could compare the number who are supposed to be on the bus versus the number who are actually on the bus. Again, they did that for us in the past. Hopefully, they can do that for us, too. You know, we, I got an email from a parent, I think a bunch of us did, where her daughter's on the bus for 15 minutes going to school, and they live a little over a mile away, I think she said, 1.2 miles. And I know where they, where they live, and it's pretty close to community school. I think we owe it to families like that to figure out what's going on. What's, why is it taking so long? So that just seems excessive to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, anything else to add, or?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's Report, School Start Update. I'm not gonna give a whole report on the, on the school start, but, Mr. Mitchell, I believe it was, everything ran smooth. I know you and Tony, Assistant Principal, Mr. Demodica made the rounds.
As I, as I have said many times, it really is impressive to see how, you know, it's, it's like there was no summer vacation. It's like, you know, the 20th of June, the day after the 20th of June, when everyone, when the school year ended, you know, everyone's back in their routines, everything went very smoothly. As you all know, the biggest issue was the extremely high temperatures, and that's the thing that we were struggling with. But beyond that, you know, the coordination that takes place at all of our schools in the morning and at the end of the school day, it's, they didn't miss a beat. It really is an impressive thing to see. So kudos to the students and staff at all of our schools for making it a real smooth transition to the start of the 18, 19 school year.
Committee, Mr. Mitchell and everyone, what gathered my, piqued my interest was I got to visit McCourt Middle School. I wanted to see the new admin layout. It's excellent. I get to spend some time with Dr. Susan Cody, the Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Erin Oliver, the Assistant Principal of School Culture, and Mrs. Tanya Rayo, academic coach, working under Dr. Cody. This, the dynamic that they've put in there, Tony, I can see you shaking your head as well, is excellent. They relocated their offices, offices there, interacting with students. I get to meet a student that just transferred from North Smithfield. They're making it very approachable for the student to get acclimated with teaching and, you know, and learning, and also with other students as well. I get to meet the new police, middle school police officer assigned to both middle schools. Got to chat with him and walk around in his routine. I was very impressed on the layout of that school. And I can see, you know, I saw good things happening, and I see even better things going forward with that one school that I got to visit. So I was very impressed with the dynamic going on over there. And also, I know a student resource officer here at the high school, Officer Kevin Kolik, retired, so we wish, I wish him the best of luck going forward. And I know we do have a new officer assigned, Mr. Mitchell, but has not started yet, and we have fill-ins. Could you talk a little bit on that?
Yes, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chairman. We, the Officer Saltzman is the officer who will be taking over for Kevin Kolik. And we're gonna invite Kevin in so that you all can, you know, let him know how much you appreciated his service over the years. But Officer Saltzman has a, you know, has a, is out on medical, and is expect... in fact, he may even be back tomorrow. But the chief has been acting as our SRO this week, so he has...
Excellent.
He's been very visible. In fact, I spend a lot of time in the high school, and to see the chief hanging out with the students, and he's been in the cafeteria, highly visible. I think it's a good thing. And, and I really appreciate the fact that the chief has stepped up and volunteered to be present in the absence of the resource officer. And, you know, we have a good relationship, and, you know, I think one of the things that is, you know, fairly easy to understand is, all its construction that's happening in the town requires details. So there, it requires officers to be there to direct traffic and what have you. So, you know, they're scrambling to make sure that the community is safe and to meet all of their obligations. So I do appreciate the chief stepping up to help us.
I also saw Captain Fay directing traffic and pulling people over, I think, or what's going on over there, but... All right, excellent. Anyone else would like to add anything? Any personal experience in school start update, anything? Okay. Next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next item on the agenda, Reports of Standing Committees, Payment of Bills. Mr. Demodica?
Payment of Bills. Mr. Chairman, we had two sets of vouchers tonight that we went through. First is the 17, 18 school year. The amount is $341,412.63. It passed upstairs in a three-to-zero vote, and I would move passage of that set of vouchers.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the payment of bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven zero.
Next is 2018, 2019 school year. The vouchers are $1,193,652.86. It passed upstairs in a three-to-zero vote, and I would move passage of that voucher as well.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of the vouchers. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. Mr. Denon, all in favor? Oh, do I have a motion saying all in favor? The eyes have it, seven zero. Sorry about that. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Demodica, anything else?
Mr. Chair, we did have a meeting upstairs tonight. We got an update from the building manager in regards to the 2018 budget amounts. We also talked about approving a HR consultant extension contract, communication service contract. We did approve the new company coming in for the student yearbooks. We amended the 2019 year school budget so that it aligns with what the town has appropriated for this year. We approved a fiscal note for the Teachers Association contract and some additional moving supplies that we had to purchase for the summer so the work could be completed. Also, we talked about the pool and additional options in regards to that, and having the company come out to service our AEDs throughout the district. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorillo?
Yes, policy did meet the other night. We had a full agenda. We discussed our early entry to kindergarten and first grade policy, which we've made some changes to, to bring it in line with state law. We also have updated the high school proficiency grading policy, which we'll discuss later on in the agenda. And also, we have, we discussed further and voted on the graduation requirements. If you remember the last time, we discussed instituting a waiver for certain students on the foreign language requirement, students that have proven that they have done their work but have not been able to achieve success with two years of a language. So we'll be voting on that also. And we also did a short discussion on the FERPA policy, which is the free education rights that all students have as it relates to students who reach the age of majority. We took no action on that, and we'll discuss that probably a little further.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee did not meet this week to make room for the supersized policy meeting that we had on Tuesday night. We are planning the next few meetings for achievement before November. And if you have any feedback on what you'd like us to tackle in the next two months, please send it to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Next item on the agenda, Comments from the Public. If you would like to make a comment to the school committee, please step up to the podium state your name. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies. Mr. Fiorillo?
Yeah.
No problem. That's okay.
We, I would ask, let me just sneak in yours. I would ask that the J1 Early Entry to Kindergarten and First Grade be read into the record as well as I-13, the high school... I'm sorry, I'm gonna hold off on the high school proficiency grading at this time. I will ask that I-14, the high school proficiency graduation policy be read into the record. So just to be clear, it's just gonna be J1 and I-14.
I-13 will be tabled, correct? And not read into the...
Right.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'd like to welcome public comment as related to J1 and I-14. Please step up to the podium. Pleasure of the committee, anyone? Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is Old Business Discussion and a Vote to Approve Amended Policy, J1. Mr. Fiorillo?
Yes, we, as we discussed, we have been discussing this policy over the last couple of months. First thing that we need to mention is that we have actually tweaked the title of the policy. It is now the Admission to Kindergarten and First Grade. So if it passes tonight, that'll be the new title of the policy. It will remain as J1. We have also, what we have done is, we're gonna stick with our September 1st deadline for students to reach that age in order to be able to enroll in kindergarten and first grade. But also, we're going to allow a student who has proven proficiency in an accredited or state-run, or state-approved program outside of the district to enter first grade after a review of the superintendent's office, to ensure that they actually have the proficiency and they're capable of doing that work. And that will really just rest on the sole discretion of the superintendent and his team. We also had a change, we have to make a small amendment. I'm sorry, I just need to get to the right place here. We gotta add one quick line.
Did we change that? Mr. Fiorillo, you're looking to make an amendment now to add a line, or is that already...
Yes. It was, we realized that there was a slight problem. We added some language just to clarify that students that have achieved the proficiency in the kindergarten program outside of the district can actually move into it. What we had was, we had a line that said the September 1st requirement shall not be waived. And then right below that, we actually are waiving it.
Talk about waiving it.
Yeah, so we just had to tweak the language slightly. It's all on the drive, though, and it's on the website, I believe.
Mr. Adams, so we make an amendment right now?
So I will move to amend.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to amend J1, Early Entry to Kindergarten and First Grade, as read...
As read into the record, and also it's in our drives.
Drives. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica?
I have a question. Where is it in the final language?
When I looked at it earlier today, I thought we had changed it. We did not. That's okay. We're making the change now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell, did you have a recommendation? I know we had talked about it earlier today on the final language.
Given the fact that I was in the visioning session all day today, I did not have a change.
All right. You know what, then? We're gonna have to table it. Yep. I'll make a motion to table until our next meeting, and we'll just clean it up and bring it back.
So, Mr. Adams, we rescind, or we just put it through as a recommendation of a no, and then table? Mr. Adams?
I have a question. This is my first time. I was... This is my first time. I was...
So we have a, okay. So we have a motion? We have a second? All in favor? Nay. Against? Nay. Yes, thank you. So it fails, it fails. Five to two. Mr. Denon.
I, I just wanna point out that the, the amendment that we're talking about, that what we will talk about next time, does not substantially change the policy at all. It, it clarifies, it, it kind of makes sense between two sections. And basically, we're, I don't have it in front of me, but what we're saying is we're not gonna waive the September first deadline, and I'm paraphrasing, for kindergarten, but we will for first grade, given what we're about to say in the next time. That's really all it is. So there's nothing substantial about it, but we'll take care of it next time.
No, and what the, what this, this policy is actually gonna keep is the reason that we actually instituted this policy a few years ago, which was to allow for students that were coming into the district, having already achieved success in a kindergarten program, to then come in and start first grade without having to repeat. So the, the original intent of this policy actually is remaining. And as Mr. Denon said, it's literally like six words.
So I'm looking for a motion to table J one. Mr. Denon makes a motion to table. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. We'll get that back on the agenda with the amended content on the drives. Next item on the agenda, new business, visiting sessions for school bond referendum presentation.
Okay, we have with us this evening Dr. Frank Locker. He led the first of two-day session, visioning session today. It was just based on my observation and personal involvement. It was an exciting day. And I think the reason that it was so exciting is because we had representation of all of our constituents. There were parents, educators, they were representatives from the town, and we had approximately ten students involved in the process, both middle and high school students. And they were, everyone was actively involved. So it really was an interesting day and we got a lot accomplished. And I know that Frank is going to give us a, just a snippet of, of what was covered today. Heather, who's in the audience, was a participant. Mike was a participant. Tony, Alex, and Jen were also participants. So I, I, I think I am speaking for everyone when I say that it was a, a really full and definitely a collaborative day. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Locker. Welcome, Dr. Locker.
Good evening. Good to be back with you. I, I presented before you, I think it was about two months ago, describing the, the concept of visioning in general. And we today are right in the middle of it. We're gonna do another full day tomorrow. I have agendas for the two days, if I could just pass them out?
Please, yes.
As I had said when I met with you before, the, the concept of visioning is to do some deep thinking with a mixed group of stakeholders to establish concepts of future teaching and learning that in this case are prelude to doing the master plan. So we, we, we are ultimately going to end up with a set of concepts that our architect is going to be working with that look at different ways to make appropriate modifications to your existing buildings. But the visioning does end up with concepts related to those. But in order to get to those facilities concept, we need to work through education. And so the two days of work is probably about sixty to seventy percent focusing on education and then thirty to forty focusing on facilities. And we do that after we work through education. So today, I just want to present a, a, a couple of quick understandings of what we did today and the trajectory of where we're going. I, I will clarify that our work does not cast in stone, you know, no ways of doing things, but it does set a start of looking at either confirming what we're doing now or making changes. And, and it's not curricular changes so much as it is delivery methods, how we deliver education. As the superintendent mentioned, we had a diverse group of stakeholders. I think there's about forty, forty-five people, something like that. Enough for us to have seven or eight table teams of six people apiece. The dynamics of six people working together is fantastic because it allows people to have a deep enough think tank to work with their, with their community members and, and fellow educators. But it also doesn't squash out the interests, gives people the points. And the other wonderful thing about multiple table teams is I can ask the same question to all of them and it's easy then to see the answers. And if they consistently are answering a question, we, they might be right. But if they're all across the board in, in responding to a question, that means we have more work to do because there's no community consensus about it. So that table team concept is very effective in both moving the issue along but also measuring the, the nature of the response. I'm not gonna labor over the agendas, but I'll just say that the days are organized as a series of challenges ranging from a half hour long to a couple of hours long. They start with education questions and with, with some small bits of facilities and then, but once we get into the beginning of the second day, we clearly are applying our discussion about the future of education here directly to facilities. We will walk out of the day tomorrow with some very specific concepts that we'll have our architect looking at as part of master planning. And, and he, of course, will bring a whole host of other issues that are appropriate for, from, for managing school buildings. So I do wanna reinforce that both days are underscored by the concept of 21st century learning. And in fact, as you kicked off the meeting this morning and, and read a letter from the state, they are looking for concepts of 21st century learning. And many of those concepts directly challenge all of our traditions. So this is deep work, this is hard work, and it is work that has to be done locally. You could have hired me to come and tell you what those should be, but that's the surest way of not having anything happen. The way things really happen, the way change happens is to have it grown from stakeholders, and that's what we're doing. So I have three flip charts to present to you. They are the work of three of different table teams, but I chose them because they represent the tone of the discussion and the direction, in fact, of our entire group of about forty or forty-five people. The, the first two are responses to a PowerPoint presentation that I gave called 21st Century Learning. And the, the first ones were educational practices. I had shared with them about forty different issues related to, to how we deliver education and then asked the table teams to identify the two most important issues for them in small group discussions. And then we did an overall. So he, these are the most important educational issues as determined by that group of forty-five people. Six out of eight table teams said that student engagement, maintaining engagement, increasing engagement, getting kids to own their learning and be excited about it, is one of our two most important issues. And I did share with them research that, from the Gallup poll, that shows what that looks like nationally. And I can just say that in general across this country, student engagement drops precipitously year by year, from a high point in elementary school to a low point right at the end of high school. And so it's a concern nationally, but it's registered here now as a concern locally. The other thing that was identified as very, very important, in the, in this case, five out of eight table teams say that 21st century skills are important. Now, these are soft skills that research has shown are important for success. And success in the 21st century is very different than success in the 20th century because the world has changed so much. And now the, the understanding is that the soft skills that have to do with how we address problems, how we, how creative are we, how, how much of a collaborator are we, are paramount. They're not on the state curriculum and they do need to be taught while doing the state curriculum. So we're not gonna take a break from educational purpose. We will weave these in as other schools do, as other districts do. We will weave these in and teach these skills while kids are learning the required curriculum. So to underscore that, six out of eight are, are wanting 21st century skills. That's collaboration, communication, creative thinking, and, oh boy. Yeah, there's a fourth one. Sorry. Rain, it's been a long day.
Mr. Locker.
Yes.
I don't know if you're gonna get to this later on, so that...
Am I gonna remember that one?
The most important one was student engagement, six out of eight.
Yes.
So the two tables that did not agree that, or maybe not agree, just came up with something else. What were, I'm just curious, what?
I don't have a record of it, but I have to tell you, this is a phenomenal plurality. Don't forget, they were given twenty different issues and asked to only pick two. And for six out of eight to pick?
I agree.
To pick that is phenomenal.
No curiosity kills the cat, so I was just kinda...
You know, I, it didn't stick in, what, you know?
This is Bernato.
Yeah, no, no. If you, if...
No, please.
But I, just from our group perspective, 21st century learning was the one we put at the top. And it's not that we didn't agree with student engagement because that, that is really what a lot of it's all about. But we started with, well, what are the changes we can make that will naturally make them engage? Like, so what are the solutions? What are we gonna implement? Because that's gonna naturally follow. When we start changing how we do things with these kids, they will naturally become more engaged because they're gonna be more invested and more enthusiastic about it. So some of that, I think, a lot of it was all very much related, but we might have just thought about it a little bit differently.
But your table, like others have done, is you, you looked at how these twenty issues that I put on the table are interwoven with each other and which ones might be the ones that you would pick because it would be a strategy to get to others. You're looking, you, you were looking for bigger accomplishments with your choice of two because I only let you pick two. If I had asked to pick eight, then it would have been easier. Picking two is harder than picking eight. And I'm sorry, I don't recall the others. I, I do have to say that these twenty issues are heartfelt. And as the facilitator, I, well, actually, I, I really do believe that picking any of them is, is probably a, a good choice. It's the discrimination of which one's most important is what takes it from my general national understanding to the local application here. And so that's important. And I'm mostly concerned that the, the discussions among the tables are, are, are really active and, and that when we get to something like this, to a response like this, it is owned by the participants and that's what we achieved today. So, excellent. That was a good thing. The, the second question was, of the twelve facilities issues I posed, which ones were the most important? And here was the scoring on that. This table happened to have had both of them. The, the number twenty-two was safety and security, again, six out of eight. Phenomenal plurality. And then 21st century schools. So, so this is skills. This has to do with the portable skills that students need. This is how we design our buildings. And so among the things they had cited were making it for student collaboration. Our traditional buildings were not designed for collaboration. Common areas, flexible common areas, flexible seating. We, we did a small unit on school furniture and, and how inflexible and how it's actually punishment for, for sitting on it for, for more than a short period of time. And then they, the last one they cited was facilitation of project-based learning. Again, a very different kind of educational. So I wanna underscore phenomenal common responses from, from among those table teams. So we did work our way through the day and as our wrap-up exercise, we looked into school structure. How are we organizing our schools? This is, this is an educational issue. It's a building issue, building, we have a building issue and a district-wide issue. But this one has phenomenal implications for the master plan. Our architect was with us and he was eagerly listening to all of this. I had asked them, I guess it was six, six questions that were very deep, open-ended, hard to answer. And I'm just gonna highlight what they were. The first one was equity. Is equity important across the district and what are the areas where we do not have equity across the schools? I think because you have, well, because you have so many elementary schools, this is where the equity question is most evident. With all the kids in the same high school, there's equity questions within the building but not across buildings. So this is a big issue and has phenomenal implications for, for, for planning of buildings. The next, I asked them about grade levels and the minimum number of grade levels that should be in the building and a maximum number of grade levels that should be in a building. And the, the reason to ask that question, and in fact, the reason to do all of these is to have our participants step out of their day-to-day reality, which is often defined by buildings, and have them think deeply about learning and kids and families and teachers and come up with a set of concepts. And we will then present this to the architect to work out what that might mean. So not all of these might finally get to the end, but they represent the best educational thinking we have and we want our architect to try them out. The old process was to back into this, start with the buildings, figure out how you can tweak and modify them and, and make some adjustments. We're, we're growing a whole, whole concept here. So the reason for the grade level question was to explore the community understanding about transitions for kids and about the effectiveness of multiple grades within a building. So what, what's really interesting about this answer, which was given by eight out of eight table teams, every one of them, is that the minimum number of grades that we should have in any single building is three and the maximum number is four. Now, if you count on your fingers the number of grades in your current elementary schools, you get to K one, two, three, four, five, you get to six real fast. So this is calling into question the current pattern of elementary schools in this district. And as I say, this is an educational concept, it's a community concept, and we will have to see how well it might fit as, as buildings, as building concepts. The next question was to look at enrollments and identify advantages and disadvantages of making larger buildings. We know that operationally, larger buildings are more economical to run on a per-student basis. And if we could find ways to make the operations more efficient, then you could either, you know, reduce spending or you can divert the spending to educational purposes rather than operating. than operations. So, it's simple logic, but opens up lots and lots of issues. So, this was an exploration. From that, we moved on to the question of the Cumberland experience. Now, I put this question on the table because I see this in many communities of this size. And it is the question as to whether we want to create learning experiences for our kids that are consistent across the district, so that a fifth grader, no matter what school they go to, can get the same experience as another fifth grader at another school. And the implication of this may be that we should have all fifth graders in the same school building, which is another kind of very different restructuring. And what we got was eight out of eight table teams supported the concept that we should be working hard to create a Cumberland experience. The last two questions related to this were groupings of students with a first, a quick look at the developmental age of kids, table teams looking at how kids, kids grow in spurts or plateaus in growth spurts, not physically, yes, physically, but certainly emotionally. And so, the question was identify that, and then identify ideal grade groupings. How do we split these? Because we can't put all kids in one building. And here were the results. Five out of eight table teams said the ninth graders were distinctly different than the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And I see this in about half the school districts I work in. Our tradition, of course, is to package them with high school. This is another idea. And of course, the transition building may allow that to happen very neatly. The other one was to, there was a pretty strong, but not as strong as the other was, that pre-K should remain a separate entity, as opposed to, say, being absorbed in every elementary school, or some possible combination like that. And then lastly, I asked them a series of very pointed questions, first about pre-K, then about elementary, and then about middle school. And the question on pre-K was that, is it alone or in a school? Four out of eight said alone. Should pre-K be a continuous K through, or should K, or should elementary, I'm sorry, should elementary be a continuous, say, K through five, as you have now? Or should it be what I call sequential schools, where you do a K1, 2, followed by 3, 4, 5? That allows teachers to be highly focused and in desultor the dynamics of the delivery. It also puts a larger cohort of kids of the same age in each school, which means that you have improved operational efficiencies, because you can balance class size more consistently if you've got more kids of the same grade. So, this is a big deal. And we had seven out of eight table teams looking for sequential elementary schools. And then lastly, I asked whether we should have one middle school or two middle schools, and seven out of eight said one middle school. And I will comment that the reason these are seven out of eight is one of the table teams preferred to have K through eights. In other words, consolidate the middle school concept with the elementary school concept and have nine-year-long school programs, which is very effective in many communities. And so while they were the outlier, I just wanted to point out that they were an outlier with some very thoughtful ideas. So, that's where we are. This was an exciting way to end the day, because the dynamics of getting here, the group discussions were really strong and heartfelt. And so for me, as the facilitator, to observe this kind of engagement, this kind of participation, makes me feel good. So, I'm pleased to be here and share with you. Glad to cover any questions.
Excellent presentation. Dr. Locker, anyone else? Anyone from the committee, any questions? Mr. Demodica?
Will the report be ready by the 21st for submission to RIDE, so that we, you know, get on that bus, I guess, for $83 million? That's my first question. The second is, is will the architect be able to, if we're talking about combining class grades into one school or two schools, is Torado Associates going to be able to put a number on that in regards to financing for the 21st century model that we're trying to accomplish? And the same with RIDE as well, when it comes to this money that they want to hopefully get for the schools?
First question. My contract is through Torado Architects. I've worked with them on a number of projects and done a number of, you know, RIDE Stage One and Stage Two, et cetera. And I will work with them to meet the deadlines for RIDE, whatever that means. The second is that these kind of alternatives, and it was good that Luis was with us today. I don't think that he was necessarily surprised by these possibilities, because he's done a lot of schools. Looking for what this means in terms of buildings really means developing more detailed space needs concepts for the different possibilities, and then looking for the fit between them and the buildings. So, to accomplish this, let's say this one as an example, say, pre-K, K to 2 and 3 to 5. That's the same five-year grade levels as you currently have, only it would be taking two of your elementary schools and linking them sequentially, identifying which one would be the K2 and which one would be the 3, 5. That's not, that may be a relatively easy kind of a flip. The variable is that you'll need more kindergartens than one of them. But we also need, we also know, you already need gymnasiums and cafeterias in some of them. So, there is work to be done regardless of what this planning concept is. So, this mixing and matching and altering, et cetera, really does have to be done from the point of view of doing it in the most logical and economical way. Don't be crazy about it, but also meet the goals. And I believe that this will all fit within the timeline that we've got. And I'm on board to work with Torado over the course of this. So, I'm not going to walk out and be gone.
Anyone else? Mr. Dennan?
Thank you. When do we talk about enrollment projections? Because it seems like that would play into any plans we make going forward, you know, long-term.
It will, and it's not my scope. So, it's part of the responsibilities under Torado's contract. But the enrollment, the enrollment projections need to be correlated with these concepts. So, for example, if we're going to have an extra, I'm going to pick a crazy number. If we're going to pick, if we're going to have an extra 400 students in elementary school here within 10 years, we can't use the current numbers. We've got to plan for that number. We planned for the five- and 10-year-out numbers.
But doesn't need to inform the visioning session, but it comes after that, and it will be part of Torado's?
Yes, but it's particular this way. There are several streams of analysis that at the beginning start out separately. This one is focusing on education. The enrollments are usually done by a specialist and are a whole set of analysis. And there's another one, which is facilities conditions. And the Jacobs report a couple of years ago gave you a first understanding of your facilities conditions. Torado's got to do more detailed work. So, you take those three streams, fold them together, and then you can begin to put together the big picture for master planning.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Locker. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve 2018-2019 school bus routes. My recommendation is a motion to table. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to table the 2018-2019 school bus routes, second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve the homeschool instruction requests for the 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, as you can imagine, this is the time of year where we get lots of those applications, some new requests, but mostly renewals. So, I believe there are a total of 57, and I recommend approval.
Mr. Mitchell, 57. Is this about the average that we got? Okay. So, on the agenda, we're looking for a vote to approve the homeschool instruction requests around 57. Do I have a motion?
Approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to rescind teacher dismissal recommendations.
Upstairs, we discussed this in executive session. And there was one teacher that was recalled, and Mrs. Vogel thought this wasn't on the agenda, but it is, so. All right, so this one is on. So, I would make a motion to rescind the one teacher, it's called Teacher Number One, that was discussed upstairs.
Mr. Demodica, thank you for stepping in on this. I appreciate it. So, Mr. Demodica makes a motion for a vote to rescind the teacher dismissal recommendation. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve the amended policies. Mr. Fiorello, did you want to tackle this one?
I will try. I-13 high school proficiency grading, we are making some changes to that, so I'm going to make a motion to table that until the next meeting.
Give a motion to table the I-13. We have a second by, a motion by Mr. Fiorello, a second by Mr. Dennan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Next item.
I-14 high school proficiency graduation. Again, this is just about the waiver for the two-year requirement of foreign language. We expect very few students to be eligible for the waiver. It is clearly laid out within the policy, within the graduation policy, and I would make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Fiorello's making a motion for the approval of I-14 high school proficiency graduation. Do I have a second? Demodica makes a second. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. SCR 2018-13 contract extension for HR consultant.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Demodica?
It was heard upstairs in fiscal. What this resolution does is allows the school committee to purchase an additional hours from the Martin Associates, which has been providing human resource services for the school district until we hire someone. And so, they need some additional hours, would be 60 additional hours. It is budgeted in the HR budget. And so, this should bring almost to an end of what we need for HR services and bring a new person on board. Passed upstairs in a 3 to 0 vote, and I would move passage, not to exceed, the new amount would be $19,500. We've already approved $15,000 previously.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the approval of SCR 2018-13, not to exceed $19,500, the extension of the HR consultant. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve SCR 2018-14 communications services contract.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs as well. The resolution authors in empowering the school committee to award a contract to Martin Associates, providing communication services from July 1st through December 31st, 2018. The original contract that we've had with Martin Associates expired, and it continued inadvertently without the school committee's permission. And this would provide services that Martin Associates has been doing. Until that time, we have some items we're working on, such as the bond referendum coming up. They do Bob talks and things like that, and with some confusion upstairs exactly what we're getting for this. And Mr. Fiorello made a motion to amend it upstairs to be a $75 per hour cap, not to exceed 1,000, I'm sorry, $19,200 through December 31st. And that amended motion passed upstairs in a 3 to 0 vote. And so, I would move passage on this motion. It was approved upstairs in a 2 to 1 vote, so we can move this to the full committee. So, I'd move passage of this agenda item.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the approval of the amended, Mr. Adams, correct? It was amended upstairs, so now it's coming to us, already amended.
We took out the words, not to exceed $3,200 per month, and $75 per, with a cap of, as
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So, we have a motion from Mr. Demodica. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Mrs. Goggan, please.
I'm not planning on voting for this or approving it. I'm not comfortable with the timeline we've been given. I know we need somebody to work on the communication about the bond, but I'm not convinced this is the best vendor to go with either. And for a variety of reasons, historically, over the last year and 10 months, I'm going to be voting against it.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion? I have a second. All in favor? Against? So, it passes 5 to 2. Okay, I apologize. So, let's do a, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Demodica? Mrs. Goggan? Mrs. Friedman? Mr. Dennan? Mr. Fiorello? Mr. Hess? The chair votes yes, so the resolution passes 4 to 3. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve SCR 2018-15 contract for Cumberland High School student yearbooks. Mr. Demodica?
Mr. Chairman, previously in the past, the school committee was never involved with the yearbook, who the vendor was. But when problems arise, it always came back to the school committee, why, what happened, you know? And so, we've asked the superintendent to kind of bring all these contracts that are not in our purview back to us, so we know exactly what's going on. So, the high school principal in the committee has selected a new vendor to provide the yearbooks for the high school, a company called Coffee Pond Photography. They're actually going to lower the cost of the yearbook for the students down to $59.66. They are currently being used by Barrington, Rhode Island, and Mr. Costa is confident that this will be a good choice for us. So, we would just like to clarify the fact that the school committee is now aware of what's happening here, and this is going through the superintendent's office, so that we're tracking these now. And so, asked upstairs in a 3 to 0 vote, I would move passage that we award to Coffee Pond Photography in yearbooks, even though we don't pay any of it, but, you know, at least we're aware of what's happening now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCR 2018-15. Do I have a second? Second for discussion by Mr. Dennan.
I have a question for Mr. Demodica. So, I know we're not paying anything for this. Do we make any money off the sale of these?
I don't know if we're making, at this price, I don't think we're making any money off this. I mean, we do pay stipends for people to get involved, but I think this is.
Yeah, I just, there's no markup that we're aware of.
Not that we're aware of.
Mr. Demodica, is there a minimum that the school commits to?
Mr. Demodica, is there a minimum that the school commits to in the yearbooks? Do you know?
It's a 288-page yearbook, underpound stock. They're doing anywhere from 400 to 499 copies of it again. You know, they already got purchased what they needed and then some extras. Full color. It's going to be bound. You know, there's custom designs, shipping's included. So there are some, you know, looking here, it's just basically a $500 deposit fee and away we go.
Excellent. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor. Against? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolution SCR 2018-16 amended fiscal year 2019 school budget.
So, Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs as well. What this is, is we approved the budget for the 18-19 school year of $68,995,714. The town finance director has it as $69,503,910. So what this is, is we are amending our budget to be in line with what the town of Cumberland, Town Council, the mayor approved for a budget for this year. And so this is just brings that line item indirectly with the years. We voted in the past to make our budgets, you know, line up with what they've given us, you know, authorized for. So this is just housekeeping. Passed upstairs in a three-to-zero vote, and I would move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Makes a motion for the passage of SCR 2018-16 amended fiscal year 2019 school budget. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Difficult task, going for the second. All in favor? Against? The eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve SCR 2018-17 fiscal note on Cumberland Teachers Association CTA contract.
Chairman, we have reached a tentative agreement with the CTA for a three-year contract. They're just working out some contract language, but we've agreed to the fiscal part of it. And so this is budgeted this year in the amount of $332,250 in 2019. It is budgeted. We've voted upstairs in a three-to-zero vote to recommend that the school committee approve this. And this is for 2019 through 2021.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCR 2018-17 fiscal note on the CTA contract that has been budgeted. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello, all in favor. Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell. I don't think I have anything, a resolution to sign for this. Am I supposed to?
Mr. Prignato?
I assumed it was in the resolution book. We'll have to make sure that we get one too, Mrs. Goggan. I apologize.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolution SCPR 9, 2018-34, additional moving services for summer projects.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs as well. What this is, we had a contract with Isaac Movers and Sturridge of Stouton, Mass. And we needed additional moving material and trailers for all the work that happened during the summer. So we are amending their contract to add an additional $4,586. So the total amount is not to exceed $71,186. It is budgeted in the $5 million health and safety master lease that was approved of work. So they've done a good job the last couple of years. Passed upstairs, three-to-zero vote, and I move passage.
Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the passage of SCPR 9, 2018-34 for the additional moving services from the summer projects. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor. Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone? Mr. Demodica?
Just upstairs, we did discuss tonight briefly, and the business manager brought it to our attention about the pool. We're looking at October 1st to start the pool. And, you know, there was a question whether we wanted to do some of the return work for the HVAC so that chlorine gases, et cetera, and, you know, better to move the air in that building out. I mean, we've got 60-year-old HVAC system in there. So they are looking for direction from us that if we are going to approve this, that they'll go and get the, we already have the bids. They'll bring a resolution to us next school committee meeting to award the work. So we'll do some additional work for the ventilation, for the returns only. And then we're getting some bids for the shower work and so forth. Because now we're going to bring the building up to ADA standards in the shower room as well. I don't believe you can do one without doing the other. So just to make a note of it, and it will come back to us at our next school committee meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. It is crunch time coming up on taking care of the pool. Mr. Prignato, how about my question also around the pool? Is that going to be all, is there a proposal to get that cleaned up and pressure washed and...
Might paint it, something, but you can power wash it, clean it up. I think, I think half of it is that the cement, when it's wet, is dark. And I think we got, I think we have a lighting issue. I think we need to brighten the lights in there. And I've talked with, I've talked with the NE about that. They've done some other lighting jobs for us at schools and stuff like that, you know, LED lighting and that type of stuff to brighten the whole pool area up. Kind of similar to what we did to the Wellness Center recently. I think that would, I think that would help a lot, but...
All right. Anyone else? Any further comments? School committee comments? No? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Prignato. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion. Oh, hold on, Mr. Fiorello. Are we, do we have executive session, Mr. Mitchell? No, we do not. Okay, Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor. Against? Eyes have it, seven, zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.